Welcome, everybody. Today's October 6, 2022 at 11:00 a.m. We are hosting our work session at the Hedges Inn on James Lane here in East Hampton Historic, Hedges Inn. So if we could start off with the pledge and then we'll move into our regular meeting. Chris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So June, can we do a roll call?
Sure. Mayor Jerry Larson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Russell Menardi.
Here.
Trustee Sandra Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Carrie Doyle.
Here.
Trustee Sarah Amadid.
Here.
Administrator Marcos Belladron.
Here.
Village Attorney.
Not here.
Okay. And that's it.
Great. Again, as I just stated, we're at the Hedges Inn on James Lane Historic Hedges Inn, and this is part of our work session series. Each work session will be held at a different historic location within the village, and today is the Hedges Inn. So I've asked Hugh King, our historian, to give us a history of this building, and if you could step up, Hugh, that'd be great.
Okay, the Hedges Inn has been, was in the Hedges family starting in 1652 up until 1923. Now, in the 1804, there was a library started in East Hampton by Lyman Beecher. It was called the East Hampton Library Company. And then in 1870, the Hedges became a boarding house. And eventually, the books from the East Hampton Library Company wound up in this building. And there were about 600 of them. And then when they gave the books to the East Hampton Library, which was in Clinton Academy on the second floor, there was no more room in Clinton Academy for a library, so they built the library where it is now in 1912. But at one time, besides being a boarding house, this was the stockpile of books for the East Hampton Library Company, okay? Now, this place has gone through a lot of owners, okay? Now, in 1923, it went out of the Hedges family, and somebody named Brooks Curry from Kentucky bought this place. And the village administrator found this one. He put a huge sign right out there, and what did it say? Duck dinners and juicy steaks. So when you came in to East Hampton, that's the first thing you saw. Well, Mrs. Mary Hamlin did not like that, okay? After Brooks Curry leaves, a guy named Julian Ekdat had this place for one year, and he lost it. And then Mrs. Hamlin buys it, Mrs. Harry Hamlin. Mary Hamlin. She bought it in 1924, but she didn't open it up until 1935. Then she ran it with her maid and her butler, okay? She was running this place. And then who shows up in 1954 but Henry Suley, who was the world famous chef who had a lot, lost having home in New York City, okay? So now he shows up. From 1960 to 64, he only ran it on the weekends. And his secret chef was Pierre Freinet, another famous chef, okay? And in 1964, A. Hunter Bowman had a group of people that bought this place, but he was arrested for fraud, so they're gone, and Henry Suley comes back, okay? And in 1969, Don Claus and Jim Strong Jr. wound up with this place. And then a man named Kenneth Bloom with 14 children ran this place. And then it went back to Henry Suley again in 1984. Now, this guy Suley was a tyrant. You know what one of the most historical events that happened at the Hedges? Complaints from the neighbors. One woman who lived near here kept complaining to Suley about the garbage cans. They would come here early in the morning, the garbage company rattled the cans around, put them in the thing, and then throw the cans back down and leave. And she told Suley either move the cans to where they are or have him do it not early in the morning. He ignored her. So what she did is she bought 12 plastic garbage cans and put them back here. When he comes out, he sees them, and he goes, "I didn't order those." Calls up the East End Hardware. Yep, they were bought by that woman next door. So what does he do? He takes the 12 garbage cans and dumps them on her lawn, okay? And the other great story about this place comes from Pierre Freinet, okay? On Saturday night, there was a sudden thunderstorm. Everyone ran for the small dining room. No sooner had the tables been sorted out than the power failed, causing momentary difficulties for the diners, but chaos in the kitchen. When the busboys rushed candles to the tables, Mr. Freinet groped through the rain to his small Renault car, driving as close as he dared to the kitchen door. He commanded a squad of sous chefs and directed them to pick up the car and heaved it inside the kitchen. And the rest of the night fair was prepared by that light, okay? Now, no history of the Hedges Inn could be complete unless someone this week drives through the fence. I found out at least 10, 10, 10 incidents, just in the short research I did, of someone driving through that fence. And finally, some man parked his car, his truck, out in front of the Hedges. And when he came out, the car, the truck was gone. All that was left was a clam rake and a gas can. I have given all this information plus more to Jen. So she has a packet to, she can quiz the people who come here, and then they can get a reduction on their bill. That's all I got.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay. Thanks very much, Hugh. So next up would be Jenny, who is the general manager of the inn and restaurant. If she could tell us what currently goes on with this beautiful place.
Sure. Well, good morning, Mayor Larson, trustees. Thanks for being here today. I'm sorry to say that a lot of the same shenanigans are going on to this day between the neighbor and the people crashing through the fence just a couple of weeks ago. We had someone come through the fence. But I'm really happy to have you here. I love the village. I love East Hampton. I love the Hedges. And to get to share it and show it to more people is special to me. So thank you for this wonderful idea to host the sessions off-site and welcome to the Hedges. So as Mayor Larson said, I am the innkeeper and executive chef here. I have been since 2016, since the end of that season. And I encounter sort of two experiences when people come in here. They've either driven by for 40 years and have never been inside, and they're so charmed by it, or they were here back in the James Lane Cafe days when the Bozzis owned it, and they're really happy to be back. Those are one of the more recent owners. The Bozzis owned it up until 2006. This past summer, we were happy to host their 50th wedding anniversary, Bruce and Mary Ann's 50th wedding anniversary here. So it's really nice to be able to welcome people back again. And yeah, so first and foremost, we're a B&B. There's 13 guest rooms upstairs across the two floors. We're open from May 1st to November 1st. One of the unique things about the Hedges are the grounds. We have two acres here that we use to host special events. We have about five or six a year weddings, bar mitzvahs, police department Christmas parties, that kind of thing. So travelers and locals get to enjoy the space year-round, really. It's really nice. And then more recently, we are sitting outside today, obviously, but we renovated the exterior here. The covered patio here is now home to Bar None, which is our sort of pop-up, but I think it's going to be a more permanent fixture. Wine Bar, we call it. The current owners are pretty heavily into hospitality and food and beverage across the country, and they wanted to try a wine bar here. So we did it last year. It was super successful. We did it again this summer. And I know I've seen most of you here and employ some of your children here. So it's really a family affair, and I'm so happy to be able to share it and take care of it, really. So thanks for being here. Thanks for the James Lane sidewalk.
I know, it looks great. Quick question for you.
Tell me.
A while ago, I was taken on a tour of the basement.
Oh, yes.
Can you tell us about the basement?
Oh.
I think that's kind of a cool story.
Yeah.
Interesting story.
Gosh, I'm really in trouble. So I call it the dungeon, and if you go down there, I think it's 60 feet long or something. It's off the back of the kitchen. It goes out into the center of the parking lot. I have heard rumors that it was part of the Underground Railroad. When the Bozzis owned it, it was a bit of a nightclub. There's still murals and things painted on the walls downstairs. And now, unfortunately, it's just used for storage as a wine cellar, but you know, it's really cool, and I'm happy to take you on a tour down there.
Yeah, it's very interesting. I would have assumed it might have been used for like prohibition era.
Hmm.
But any rumors about that or?
I, I mean, Mr. King, no?
It could have, yes, it could have, absolutely.
Could have, yeah.
Yeah. It would be cool to have a little speakeasy down there again.
Yeah, that would be interesting. Who would know?
Never know. Two egress, right? That's all we need. Oh, so one other thing. So we're going to work on the ground floor renovation over the winter here. And like Mr. King said, this was the backup sort of library. And we're going to put a bit of an homage to Mrs. Hedges in the front room there in the den and turn that into a bit of a library, built-in books and bookshelves and things like that. So it's exciting.
Very exciting.
Exciting, and appreciate your support and the board's hard work and continued success.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Jenny.
All right, next up, we have a board discussion on 25 mile an hour speed limits on all village roads. So just a little history on this. Fred Thiel proposed legislation recently, New York State, and it was passed that will now allow villages to make the speed limits 25 on village roads should they choose to without any special requirements. Prior to this legislation, New York State basically governed speed limits on village roads, and you had to have very specific reasons to lower the speed limit below 30. So this is very good legislation because during the summer mostly, we get a lot of complaints about speeders on the side roads because a lot of people are using them as bypasses from the main road because it is completely jammed up due to mostly congestion and faulty traffic lights, in my opinion. So how do we feel about that as a, as a board? Do we have any concerns or issues? Or do we want to just make every road we can a 25 mile an hour speed limit, excluding the state roads that does not cover the state roads? We still have to go through a process of contacting the state and explaining to them why we want to lower speed limits on state roads. Anybody?
I would agree to change it to 25. Makes it safer for everybody.
Would you, when you say if we do it all, or would it be road by road where each road would petition? Or how would that work?
Well, we wouldn't have to petition. We could, we could create a law that basically lists every street that would be.
And just go to 24.
Yeah. We kind of have it now. Every street is listed in the village code, and it specifies what the speed limit is, so we would just be changing all of the 30s to 25.
I'm in favor.
All right.
Yeah, I don't even. We've heard from the Cove Hollow especially. They would like that.
Yeah, we had that request, and I explained to them that this was coming. So this would just make it easier rather than having to do every road individually, so. All right, so everybody's in favor. We'll have our attorney start drawing up the legislation. The next issue that we wanted to talk about, and we've heard from residents and visitors and people who park in the Long Term Lot and park in our Ruder Shan Lot about creating a law that allows dogs or abolishing the law that prohibits dogs in Herrick Park. So it is kind of a burden because we ask people to park in the Long Term Lot, and then they really are not allowed technically to bring their dogs through the Herrick, through Herrick Park, which really doesn't make a lot of sense, in my opinion. But how does the board feel about doing something about dogs in the park?
I'm okay with it. The only thing is enforcement, you know? I mean, the park, kids are playing in, and people are enjoying the fields, whether they're playing in the grass or on the playground. You know, dogs go to the bathroom two different ways. So you know, you're relying on people to clean up after one way, but you know, when they go number one, you don't really clean up after it. And they go on the things. I notice this from the beach a lot, is the dogs will go pee on the lifeguard stand. They might go pee on something, and it, so if people had dogs on a leash, I think that would be good just so that the dog was, you know, looked after. You know, as for being on the fields, I'd like to see what other people have to say. I mean, the kids, the schools use that field a lot, middle school. You'd hate to have a kid run into dog droppings. But I'm not against dogs back there, so I don't know what, you know.
Could we put the bags that we put at the beach, at the rear parking lot, and then someplace like by the public restrooms?
Yeah, all the entrances, we could put bags like we do at the beach.
I think that would just help in case someone forgot. I mean, a lot of times, I think it's, people don't have something with them or.
And enforcement. I mean, do we have the TCOs and the police officers? Can they handle that extra job? I mean, I guess they'd have to do it now anyway. They got to either kick people out.
Right.
Or tell them that you have to have your dog on a leash or pick up, so I guess that's the same.
And there's no, it's on a leash at all times.
Yeah, I mean, what I was thinking was during school hours, in school days, dogs would only be able to be on a leash and pass through the park. Like, let's say they're going from Ruder Shan to Long Term. Non-school hours, I would say the dogs could be in the park, but on a leash, never off a leash.
Never off a leash.
Yeah. Something like that, I think, would be reasonable.
Yeah.
Because it still allows people to traverse the park with their dog anytime. But on the weekends, let's say when school's out, you could actually go to the park while your kids were playing on the jungle gym or whatever, swing sats, and you could have your dog there, so.
And summer as well?
Summer as well because school would be out, right.
Yeah. No, I agree. As a dog owner, I have a hard time because the summer I can't walk my dogs on the beach before 9:00 or after 6:00. And when you have small kids, I know it's hard because you can't leave those hours, leave your kids and go to the beach or drag them there. So it'd be nice to have another venue to walk the dogs around.
Yeah. I like it, and I think, you know, this summer we had quite a few or a few incidents where we had the dogs left in the vehicles, which was kind of scary.
And did we have any issues with dogs, bites, or getting lost? Or do we have any, no, we didn't have any this summer? Well, that's good, all right.
Yeah. So why don't we, it seems like everybody's in favor. So why don't we have the attorney draw up some legislation? We'll look at it at our next meeting, and then we'll, if everybody's in favor of what he's written or she's written, and then we'll move it to a public hearing. How's that?
Would school hours count as for after-school because they do play sports back there as well?
Yeah, we think that would be smart, yeah. Okay. All righty. Well, we're moving right along.
But I have one thing to say about that, just moving back to the hours. Would there be any way, because you're, it makes sense with the back parking lot and the front parking lot, just having like a dog trail that they're always allowed? Because if you start getting back into the hours, it kind of defeats the purpose of people being able to walk their dog from the back parking lot to the front parking lot.
Yeah, I think, I think what Chris was saying was that letting, having the dog in, in the park during the school hours or even after-school hours when they're playing sports will always allow, what I had suggested, we always will allow them to cross the park.
Pass through, okay.
So there'd be no limit on those hours. But you just can't, you know, play with the dog in the field while the kids are playing. You can't have them over by the jungle gym when the kids are there.
But can you have them, I mean, I know a lot of people, when they go to watch their kids' sporting events, they bring their dog.
Right.
Can they, can they bring their dog to watch that?
Yeah.
If they're on the leash?
Yeah, well, it gets kind of difficult to write this law, I know.
I know.
So why don't we, why don't we start with this concept?
Okay.
Then when Lisa provides us with the law, we'll kind of tell her what we're thinking, and then we'll look at the law at the next meeting, and then we'll see how we can tweak it before we move it to a public hearing.
Okay.
I think that would, because I think once we have something in writing and then we have a little more time to think about it
Yes.
in the next two weeks, maybe we'll come up with some, some better language or something.
Yeah, we need like a dog park somewhere.
We should. We should have a dog park.
Well, it's not on my agenda today, so let's not open that up right now. All right. Next thing on the agenda is pickleball legislation. Recently, Sagaponic created legislation to increase setbacks, requirements when you're installing a pickleball. Pickleball is a really fast-growing sport, and it's louder than tennis. It's a smaller court than tennis, so it's easier for people to install them on their property, meeting the current setbacks, which may not be enough due to the noise. So I asked Billy, our village planner, to maybe look into this a little bit and just give us a little update on what he found to try to help us.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I'm from the board. So as you indicated, we are seeing a larger number of pickleball courts, pickleball courts, sorry, being proposed and constructed in the village. We have received at least one complaint from a resident who is being proactively concerned about the noise that's generated by pickleball courts. As Mayor explained, they are noisier, or believed to be noisier than your standard tennis court. And right now, our zoning code requires doubled setbacks. So your accessory structure setback is a lesser setback than your principal building setback. And for playing courts, we require them to be doubled. However, doubling the current accessory setback might not be, may not be enough to protect neighbors from the noise that's generated by playing pickleball. So it's a hard ball. It's a hard paddle. It's like ping pong, only amplified, so it does make a lot more noise. Sagaponic has required, or they've limited the location where pickleball courts can be installed on, within certain zoning districts. So something we could look at is requiring or limiting pickleball courts to lots of a certain size. So if you have a larger lot, you're eligible for installing a pickleball court. They also require them to be sub-circus or partially below grade, four feet below grade, which is believed to act as a noise containment device. So you have, you bury it, and then you also put up a sound attenuation fence above the four feet. So that's intended to create a, you know, sort of a zone where the noise is contained. So if we don't require that right now, that's something that we could consider to help shield, you know, shield the noise or contain the noise. And they also have regulations for converting existing tennis courts to pickleball courts because it's pretty easy to change one from another. And right now, I mean, you have to have a fairly large piece of property to build a tennis court. You know, they're 60 by 120, 60 feet by 120 feet. So they take up a large piece of your land, and it's a lot of coverage. And so generally speaking, we only have folks that have, you know, two to three acre parcels building tennis courts, whereas a pickleboard, pickleball court is less than half the size. So it could be built on a much smaller lot with lesser setbacks, which could end up creating a problem or nuisance for a neighbor. So I could distribute to the board the regulations that were adopted in Sagaponic, and we can use that as a springboard for creating something that might be more fitting for the building of East Hampton. It's not everything they did might be fitting for us, but we could use that as a model for deciding how you want to, if you want to make some adjustments to the code to address the potential concern.
Are you, oh, go, go. Are you aware of anybody else, other municipalities that have instituted any law on this?
Sagaponic is the only municipality I'm aware of right now.
Okay.
I spoke to East Hampton Town yesterday, and they have nothing. Billy, can you just review our current zoning for tennis courts?
Sure. So it's, your accessory structure setback is based on the size of your lot. So it's either 10 feet, 15 feet, or 20 feet, depending on the size of your lot. So anything over one acre has a 20-foot setback. We double that for playing courts and swimming pools. So the minimum setback would be 40 feet on a large lot or a tennis court, a pickleball court, or a swimming pool. But if you have, you know, less than a one-acre lot, it's possible that somebody could build a pickleball court either 20 or 30 feet from their neighbor with no requirement for shielding or screening or sound attenuation.
So, so currently, I mean, in my opinion, if you have tennis, you probably have a swimming pool. And to have a swimming pool and a tennis court, you're probably somewhere in the 60,000 square foot range. I mean, so under your opinion, what do you think the smallest lot would, would fit a tennis court?
Probably 60, you know, it depends on the shape and what other improvements exist. But I would say anywhere from like, you know, 50,000, 50,000 is probably tight. But 60,000 square foot lot is probably what you're running mill is for a lot that has a tennis court, you know, a garage, a large house.
And so that's about an acre and a half, if everyone understands that 60,000. So what I asked Billy was that if you can, if you can put tennis in, it means you have about an acre and a half.
Yeah.
And so I think we can start to understand what lots and which areas have this type of land. Some areas, for example, the street that I live on, I don't think there's any acre and a half parcels. However, areas like Georgia, there's a mixed match of all kinds of lots.
The distinction with a pickleball court is they're much smaller in size, so you can, you know, you, I'm sure, less than an acre, you could fit a pickleball court on a piece of property.
Definitely, yeah, it would bring it to have the coverage, yeah.
That's not the problem, it's the noise.
Tom, how many applications have you seen in the past two, since you've been here?
For pickleball?
Yeah.
Half a dozen, I guess. I would say I'm just educating myself on pickleball. It's kind of new to me. It's kind of new to everybody, I guess.
So about six so far?
Yeah, probably about six. There was a couple already existed, you know, previously.
And do we have any violations or complaints? Like, what's with that? Like, has there?
Not, not pickleball specifically. But I can certainly, you know, having done a little research, it looks fun, actually. It looks fast and fun. But it looks also noisy if you're not in the game. It's actually, I'm sure it'd be noisy to everybody because there's a lot of clicking, clacking, and back and forth. And like I said, I just came up with a speedometer to see what it even is. And, but we haven't had, I would say, I mean, maybe an occasional complaint. No, not even, Chris, but like Billy said, some of the smaller lots might be counted as four of them, and it could be as close as 20 feet without any.
Does, you had mentioned that Sagaponic has legislation. Did they address tennis courts being converted into pickleball?
Yes, they did.
What did they do about that?
So they, they require an eight-foot fence of a certain sound attenuation material to be installed to convert to a pickleball court. And so that's something we have to modify because we don't permit eight-foot fences in the village right now.
Right.
So we have to come up with something else, maybe a six-foot fence. But it's, it's a three-quarter inch solid wall-type fence they require. Usually, it's a double, typically when, like before the zoning court, when, when somebody's proposing a tennis court or a playing court that doesn't meet the required setbacks, the standard mitigation measure is two rows of stop gate fence or equivalent with a layer of sound attenuation material, like caving between the fences. And that seems to do a pretty good job. We've posted around generators, we're providing around generators to evade noise, AC condenser units, and that seems to work pretty well.
Could you do me a favor? Like, could you check with Sagaponic and see if anybody's installed one of these with their eight-foot requirements? Maybe take, go take a couple photos of that or see if they have it in their file?
I could check their files. I don't, I would need permission from them.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I was thinking that too. But maybe in their files, they would have, so we could take a look at what this all looks like?
Sure.
I'm just picturing really ugly eight-foot fence, solid.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if they've, I mean, it's fairly new legislation. It was adopted in April of this year. Yeah, I don't know if they've, I mean, it's fairly new legislation, it was adopted in April of this year. So I don't know how many, it's possible they've issued permits, but.
Yeah, well, let's just, if you could take a look and then let us know.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, um, I could certainly get ahold of John, let him know if he's, if they ever see, you know, any, you know, the buses.
That'd be great, okay.
Or any comment that he's received.
So maybe you could do that and then report back at the next meeting in two weeks? And just let us know what you found? Um, what is it, the board, anybody have any concerns or questions about this?
Is this something, I mean, I think we should build them in the park, is this something we'd do, we'd have to do if we built them in the park also?
Yeah, I mean, we would, yeah, we would have to, I mean, where we're putting it in the park would be, um, less, there's no real residence around there where it's gonna go. But, I mean, we could look at that, but this is more for residential stuff. And I think we need to get a handle on it before, we've already had six applications go in and if this is as bad as people are saying, it's going to start generating a lot of complaints, so.
It is loud.
I agree, and I think, I, I have heard, may not have gotten official complaints, but I've heard from several neighbors who are just not the type to call the village to complain, who are very unhappy with the noise. And I think the problem also is that there's not many pickleball courts, so that they end up lending it out to people, so all day long, people are there, all day playing pickleball and the neighbors get no reprieve from that. And it is loud and I do like the idea of, um, you know, a lot size and some sort of protection for the neighbors because it's a very, and it's always for people, it's not like tennis, which is sometimes too.
Yeah.
I, I would like to find a way to pro, not prohibit, but to, to limit uh, property owners that couldn't put tennis, I mean, if you can't put a tennis court on there, I don't think you should have a pickleball court on there because you're really squeezing it in there and that means you're extra close to the neighbors as well. I mean, again, if you have a sports court, you got a garage, you've got a pool, you've got a lot and I think that you would be, you'd have a lot of noise on your property, I mean, I don't, I, I, I'd like to look out for those, I mean, if you have a pickleball court next to you on a three-quarters of an acre and that, that's tight. And, um, tennis is, is loud, so I, I'd, I'd like to go forward with this somehow because I can see it gonna be a nuisance. I don't know what that is.
Provide the board with the village of Sagaponic's law, um, and then maybe offer suggestions on how you might amend it to fit it in.
Why don't we, why don't we go a little, a little faster? Why don't we do that and also work with Lisa, the village attorney? And try to draft up what you're thinking into our law? And then we'll have both of them to look at and then we can, um, we can tweak it from there and, and try to get this expedited a little bit, so.
And I just had a question, a little workout, you know, I want to comment, so, um, the ones that are already out there, is that kind of like water under the bridge? Is there any, I mean, do we have keepers who are ratchel active where sound abatement might happen? I mean, I think we're getting this at a good time.
Yeah.
You are getting this at a good time because it's become, uh, very popular.
I guess we would have, I have to ask the, the attorney if we can, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I believe if it was constructed as a pickleball court, assuming it's a permit, it's legally existing. Conversion of existing tennis courts to a pickleball court, there might be something more to do to.
Yeah.
And maybe some of those applications would fit anyway. You know, we, we're assuming that out of those six applications that they're all non-conforming, maybe they are big lots and it'd be fine, so maybe it's less than six.
Alright, so I think everybody's in agreement, we'll move that way?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
I've played it.
Yeah, it's a fun game, but it's a little loud, I guess. Oh, Billy, one other question, does Sagaponic restrict hours of play? Is that something that can even be done?
Not that I'm aware of.
They don't do it? Okay, so it's a question for the attorney, see?
It's gonna be a question.
Be nice to be able to restrict it before, you know, nine AM or something or, you know.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, we don't allow courts to be illuminated, so that restricts it to daylight hours, but I don't know about.
Yeah, in the summer, daylight's pretty early, so I don't know if anybody would be out that early, but who knows?
The difference between Sagaponic is that overall Sagaponic has much larger lots.
Right.
I mean, so it's funny that the area with the largest lots is putting in legislation and, you know, all of the hamlets that have smaller lots haven't done anything yet. Who knows, but it would, it would be nice to get ahead of this, I agree.
Yeah, alright, well, anybody else have anything, uh, in reference to these topics? No, alright, we're gonna have a motion to close?
Second.
Okay, meeting is closed, thank you, everybody.